Good afternoon, everybody. The hour is about 4:02, and I'd like to call the Kane County Committee of the Whole Meeting of May 25, 2021, to order. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Allen.
Allen, present. Good afternoon.
Bates.
Bates here.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Ross.
Ickball.
Ickball, present.
Gums.
Here.
Kenyon.
Present.
Caius, present.
Kopee.
Kopee's present.
Leonard.
Leonard, here.
Lewis.
Lewis here.
Martin.
Martin, present.
Molina.
Molina, present.
Sanchez.
Sanchez, here.
Shepro.
Shepro, present.
Silva. Strathman.
Strathman, here.
Sergeus.
Tepe.
Tepe, here.
Warreniki.
Present.
You're up.
Very good. We have a quorum. Did I see our treasurer just walk into the room?
Yep.
Since you were the last one in, could you please lead us as a pledge of allegiance?
(LAUGHING) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the March 30, 2021 meeting?
Allen moves.
Captain's, second.
Thank you.
There were a lot of people.
Second. We can, Caius and Sergeus, that'll be fine. Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes?
May I suggest that we request unanimous consent to place the minutes on file as approved?
After we call the roll? Yes, please. No, we don't need to?
If there's no objection, then there's no need for a vote.
It'll be fine. Excellent suggestion. Thank you. So they are approved and put on file. All right.
That for everything?
Are there any public com-- is there? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment online? We will then move forward to the reason for the meeting, and I will turn this over to Chris Allen, who will introduce our speaker for the day.
Thank you. Davis, found the right Zoom connection finally. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce Mr. Jason Dwyer from White and Company and reference the facilities master plan that we're currently having going on as a new initiative. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. So I think for some of you, this will be a little bit of a rerun of some of the work that we presented at the Administrative Committee last month, but I'll try to kind of quickly go through a little bit of the planning history just to give you a sense of what we've worked on in the past, working with you, and we're very excited to be working with you again on this exciting planning project. And then we'll talk a little bit more about process and steps going forward. So, you know, back in 2014, we actually thought it might be interesting to do a little bit of a history of what we've done with the county. So I'll just kind of walk through that a little bit because I think it's important to reflect a little bit on where you've been. Kane County's done a really nice job over the last 30 years or so, working through different planning strategies, being very forward-looking about where to go with projects, then executing some of that vision, coming back and replanning, and that's kind of a nice process to go through to continue to refine and reshape a long-range plan. So I'm going to start back in, maybe I'm going to start back in early or late 80s. It did for the first slide. Is it just a lag or is it? Okay. Yeah, seems to be working. Thanks. So this is just an overall timeline going back to the late 80s, getting closer to present day, showing some of the project work. So let me go back to late 80s here, really, when the county made the decision to acquire the property at 38 and Peck Road. At that time, I think there was a sort of keen vision about looking for a larger piece of property that could become home to additional county facilities in terms of a long-range planning study. So the property was acquired, and then shortly thereafter, we worked with the county to develop what was one of our first master plan projects with Kane County. And at that time, there was probably a little bit more focus on judicial functions at that site, the idea of consolidating court operations, criminal court operations at that site. So that's really what you're seeing in the orange block there. And then the red blocks were an eye toward sort of the eastern half of the site, the potential for future development that, you know, was kind of a little bit open-ended at the time in 1989. Then fast forward to 1993 is when the county moved forward with the execution of the Judicial Center, which was really focused and still really is home to criminal courts, as well as a lot of what we call agency offices or support functions of state's attorney, public defender, court services, probation functions. And that building, I think, has served the county well for many years and was really considered to be sort of the first phase of implementation for judicial functions, court functions at the 38 and Peck Road site. Following that, we did another update to the master plan. This started to broaden the view a little bit, to focus on some of the other functions. So taking a little closer look at juvenile justice operations, adult justice operations, even given consideration to what might happen long-term for the government center and some of the government support functions. So we called it at the time a kit of parts master plan. It explored a number of different scenarios of reorganizing different county judicial and government functions, trying to find the best strategy for supporting good long-term operations, as well as convenience for the constituents of the county. So this shows a lot of the different potential moves that were to be made at the time, with additional functions moving out to the 38 and Peck Road site. So then in 1997, the county then moved forward with another project to advance the Juvenile Justice Center. So this was a project that was done as a design-led, design-build project, and we were fortunate enough to be partnered with you on executing this project. And I think what's interesting about this, much like the Judicial Center, it was envisioned to be an initial phase and had potential expansion opportunities. I think many of you probably know that the building was built with an initial housing function to it, but it had the potential to do additional expansion of that housing function. And then I think at the, one of your most recent meetings, there was space in the second floor that was planned for another courtroom out there, and I know you're moving forward with that project right now. And why I bring that up is I think it's important with any project that you execute that you're always looking toward an opportunity to allow for future expansion. And, you know, it may be that you may never need that additional expansion in the juvenile detention operations, but I think it's important because, you know, while that might not be a critical function in the near term, we've seen that over years of planning that the pendulum always tends to swing a little bit one way or the other. And, you know, so it's good to have, as I call it, sort of an outlet valve for future growth and really all functions that you're planning for. So then in 2005, the focus shifted again back to the adult justice function. So that's along Fabian there, the old jail, and recognition that that facility was moving well beyond its useful life and that new facilities needed to be built. In concert with that, the county was working on strategic planning, just in terms of what the priorities were, tackling things like, you know, what facilities maybe should be divested of, what is the right strategic vision for the county to properly serve the constituents and the different stakeholders of the county. And then tied with that, kind of 2007 timeframe, was a little bit more focus on capital planning. So, you know, we look at it as a couple of different functions. You've got sort of long-range space needs and facilities planning, but also the idea of taking maybe in five-year increments a focus on capital plan functions. So, you know, that could be a whole range of things, dealing with building maintenance or smaller, you know, deferred projects, things that you need to do to kind of keep your existing facilities up to optimal condition. So that's kind of another piece of the puzzle, I'd say, in terms of overall facilities planning. Then moving forward, 2008 is when you executed the adult justice center functions. And again, this project was also planned to allow for some additional expansion as that need might arise down the road. 2009, we came back after a couple of projects had been executed and did an update to the master plan, and I'll talk about this one in a little more detail in just a minute, but it was continuing the vision of exploring opportunities to consolidate more facilities at the 38 and Peck Road site. So we got a little bit of a curveball in 2010. At that time, there were a couple additional judges that were authorized legislatively in the system, and there was a little bit of a pressure to figure out where to place those judges, how to find facilities for them. Tied with that, there were some challenges with parking at the Judicial Center site because of the current operations there. So we undertook a kind of more focused, short-term feasibility study to address that specific need that arose. And at the time, I think we explored six different scenarios for solving some of the short-term needs. And ultimately, the county opted to move forward with a new traffic court. So the Randall Road Traffic Court and Conference Center, built just north of the circuit clerk space at the facility on Randall Road, was one option, which also served the purpose of taking a little bit of the parking burden because traffic court has a tendency to have a pretty significant number of folks come into it at one time and places a pretty heavy traffic burden. So we shifted that to Randall Road. We also made some modifications to the Third Street Courthouse to accommodate an abuse and neglect court there, which freed up some space at the lower level of the Judicial Center to accommodate the judges. The other thing that happened at that time is the county kind of reaffirmed their commitment to a long-range plan, to continue to explore opportunities to expand the Judicial Center campus consistent with prior master planning. So 2011, this is the, just a picture of the traffic court that was done out there. And then, so 2015, we kind of took just another quick look at some of the plans for expanding the Judicial Center campus. So I think many of you are probably familiar with some of that planning. I mean, the buildings pictured there, the white box we show, we kind of call that the grassy knoll or the entry point there. That was an idea for expansion of, I'll say, Phase Two of the Judicial Center, and then there was an option to go to a Phase Three consolidation for civil courts as well. So this is just a, we actually developed a little scale model of that that had kind of a floor-by-floor planning of the different functions. I won't walk you through every floor of it, but this shows the existing building and then kind of a start of that expansion, that Phase Two expansion. And the idea there was to accommodate some additional courts. It also had space to be able to consolidate the circuit clerk into the building to start further consolidating court operations. And then the idea at the time was to move the state's attorney from their current space in the existing building into the addition, which then freed up a little bit more room for probation, court services, and public defender to continue to expand their office functions there in the other wing of the building. So there was a recognition at that time that with increased load on the campus and functions, that parking was going to again be a premium. So the plan included an additional parking deck out there so you could accommodate additional visitors or even maybe a little bit more secured parking at the site, too. Couple different options there. And then finally, the last phase was to build one more wing to the building, which would allow you to fully consolidate all court operations and bring the civil family court functions from Third Street to the building as well, to have a completely unified court system. So that just gives you an idea of how we look at the projects and always look for those expansion opportunities. So let me touch on the master plan a little bit. Part of what went with the overall master planning is a fairly detailed analysis of what the needs were for all the different departments. So I don't expect you to read this. It's just what we try to do in the process is work with all the different groups to understand what their needs are. So this represents a lot of the county government functions and then judicial functions, the idea being that we're using a variety of different metrics to do planning for what the growth in operations might be, what their staffing increases might be over a period of time. And oftentimes, we look at this as a 20, 30-plus-year planning horizon, and that's not to say that, you know, any of us have that perfect crystal ball to say exactly what it's going to be needed at 30 years out, but the idea is that if we're looking at this as sort of a rolling schedule, we're looking with the best view we can toward long-term functions and then taking it in increments leading up to that, but then revisiting that to kind of reconfirm what's changed, what's evolving in the future, how are operations adjusting so that we have a roadmap that we can keep tweaking and refining as time goes by.
Excuse me, can I ask a question, please?
Yes, Ms. Bates.
What is DGSF?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so we use a couple technical terms in our space needs planning. So one is NSF, net square footage, so that would be like the area just within a specific room, within four walls of a room. DGSF is a departmental gross square footage. So that allows us to look at groups on a departmental level in terms of their whole need for square footage.
And I have a question. That plan that you just showed us, the grid sheet, that was done in what year, 2010?
2009 timeframe.
Because I've noticed that there's been definitely increase in some of these staffing requirements.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's where I say that, you know, we're looking at longer-range planning and trying to make incremental adjustments on, you know, five- or 10-year time horizons, but there's always going to be things that come up, you know, whether they be a legislative change, a new function that's added, or a new opportunity that you want to take advantage of that may dictate more staff. So, you know, perhaps you pursue a grant for a new function within the county that may bring some staff with it. So those kind of things can come up, come and go over time. So that's where I think having good flexibility in the planning and, you know, you don't want to overbuild your space, but you want to look at having enough space so that you can, you know, place people if you're fortunate enough to get a grant or have a new opportunity that you can take advantage of, that you've got the space to do that. Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Sergeus.
For those of us that are townies and of modest origins, when we see that Randall Road facility and it looks like a shiny new courtroom, that's where we bought our blue jeans and our shoes when it was the Montgomery Wards. And I don't ever want to lose sight of the, you know, what some of these buildings have been in the past before they've been repurposed.
Sure. That's very fair, and I think it's important, you know, when we do these studies, we're trying to find the right opportunities to make sure you're well-positioned for the future, but, you know, we work with a lot of different counties and, you know, I've yet to come across a county I've worked with that had any unlimited means. So we know it's important to always be kind of looking at things with a keen eye, to be respectful of the finances and the financial position of the counties we're working with. In fact, we just completed a similar first-place study for Cankey County, and I think any of you that know Cankey County, they've really been struggling with some of their finances, and they're just kind of righting the ship a little bit. So we're developing a plan and then trying to find really creative ways to solve some of the problems that they're having on a space needs basis within the financial resources that they have. So that's a big piece of the puzzle.
Yes, Mr. Martin.
Is it a fair assumption that these plans that we're looking at have some concept or preliminary engineering so we know that it's going to hold the water and do the things it needs to do if it were ever built out?
Yeah, yeah, and I think you'll recognize, looking at this plan, for example, that the county has already departed a little bit from this plan in terms of the development of the multi-use facility there on the campus. And, you know, all the planning has to have at least an underlying baseline of, you know, does the site really support that? Is there preliminary budgeting that's consistent, that works? I kind of look at this as a building process, you know? It's important to start with analyzing the core data first, making sure you've got a good handle on what the needs are. Then you start to develop a plan, factor in some of the details of site constraints or site opportunities, put some dollars into the mix there to make sure you're tracking with available funding, that there's a financial plan that can support the building plan. And then as you start to get traction on a project or something starts to rise to the level of being one of your priority projects, that's where we would recommend going a little bit deeper to start doing more detailed engineering on the site. But you can't bite it all off at once. It's a matter of, you know, just kind of working your way through the process and confirming viability on the options as you go and so that you're not spending too much money on the front end before you realize that something may or may not be feasible or may or may not be your most high-priority project.
Okay.
You know, so this plan, you know, as I say, this is 2009, and it's already a little out of date. And, but I think, you know, you still have some buildable area at this campus. There's the property north of 38 as well. At that time, that part of the campus was, or that part of the property was considered to be a little bit more of the supportive functions of, you know, record storage and fleet and some of the things. Now, some of that you've built with your multi-use facility already, but, I mean, this just shows you that, you know, all these plans are flexible and, you know, can adapt as your needs change and the needs adapt. But it's just good to kind of keep checking down to make sure that all the needs comprehensively are being thought through and addressed long-term. So that kind of takes me to, I mean, done with the history, I guess, and talking a little bit about just sort of approach on how we do this. We've done this with you before and worked with a number of different counties and found this process to work pretty effectively in terms of working through a planning. And so we look at it sort of four phases in that, first being what I call that assessment phase, and then we start to look at prioritization of needs, tying that together into Phase Three, where we're really looking at more detailed future planning of projects, and then finally pulling it all together in terms of a final recommendation that has been vetted with all the stakeholders and confirmed to be, you know, the right plan for the county at the time. So I'm not going to talk in great detail about Phases Two through Four. I want to talk a little bit about Phase One and then hopefully answer any other questions you may have. So, you know, I like to say that making sure we've got all the ingredients into the process are important at the first phase. So making sure we're thinking through, you know, what your vision is, what your goals are for the project so that we're starting out the planning process in a thoughtful way that's responsive to what's important to all the key stakeholders here in Kane County. So, you know, some examples of that that we already know about is you've got the green building policy, you know, things like that, that are decisions that you've made to implement projects in a thoughtful, sustainable way would be examples of sort of guiding principles or key ingredients to any kind of a planning process. You know, other things like, I've seen with other counties, I'll just use DuPage as an example for a minute, you know, in their health department, for example, they put a lot of emphasis on behavioral and mental health services as kind of a focal element of the health department there. So we knew that that was important to them, and we wanted to make sure that that was thoughtfully considered in the planning work we did for them. So these are just types of things that, you know, may be important. They may be functions, certainly functions that you're doing now with all your different government and judicial operations need to be considered. But we'd like to have you think, big picture, about, you know, other things that might be coming down the road, you know? What else is going to be important to the residents of the county? How can project planning work be responsive to the other municipalities? I mean, we know that in terms of population centers, you've got the tri-cities, but you've also got population centers in the northern and southern part of the county with Elgin and Aurora. And, you know, how would those type of parameters for the county weigh into planning considerations? We've seen a lot of counties consider doing different things with satellite facilities or finding opportunities to bring services closer to the constituents where they live. So, you know, it's all those kind of things that we want to make sure we're getting the feedback from the leadership here so that as we move forward with planning, we can kind of take all of those thoughts and opportunities into consideration as part of the planning process. So, you know, we call that kind of the understanding first phase, developing these guiding principles to help keep us on track with what's most important to the county so that we don't find ourselves meandering too much into areas that maybe aren't going to be best, you know, best results for the county. The other part of really Phase One is kind of two-pronged. I talked a little bit about the space needs planning, where, you know, we sit down with all the different departments and interview them, work through details about what their functional operations are, how do their current facilities support or not support their operation, how do things like, you know, fit and adjacency work. But the other part here is really looking at assessment of the existing built assets. So, you know, looking at a building like this, is this building have good long-term viability to continue to support the functions and departments that are in it? Has a building outlived its useful life? Is there a better way to organize different departments for better efficiency? So to do that, we do a pretty deep analysis of physical conditions. We identify how well spaces are utilized. You know, we find that a lot of times buildings were not purpose-built for the functions that are currently in them, or they've been retrofitted over time, or operations have changed, but the building hasn't been able to change with them. So we like to get through all the different buildings, look at the conditions, look at how well they're utilized, and make, you know, a fair assessment of how, you know, how good of an asset that asset is for serving the county's needs long-term. So that's kind of the physical condition assessment side. And then the other part is the future needs planning. So that's where we're looking at, really talking through with all the different departments, what their operations are, you know, how are they working? The little inset box there shows a couple of the different planning models that we use. And like I said, there's not a crystal ball that tells us exactly how many staff they're going to need, so we like to look at a lot of different metrics. Different functions have different metrics that tend to be more workable. You know, population increases and caseload, for example, may factor in more significantly on the judicial side of the operations. There may be legislative changes that have an impact on the future going forward. You know, we've seen House Bill 3653 that came through that's a legislative change that maybe has an impact on, you know, criminal justice operations. So those kind of things, we have to keep an eye on to see what, you know, what the impacts might be, how that might affect different departments in terms of what they do operationally, what their staffing and space needs might need to be. So we look at a lot of different planning metrics to, you know, make best assessment of what the future staffing and space needs might be. And then we also, you know, using information from the physical walkthroughs, identifying what the, you know, what the utilization of spaces or key deficiencies. You know, we find sometimes that, you know, as you've grown over time, you've kind of displaced people into sort of spaces that weren't really set up for them, or you've lost conferencing spaces to make offices or workspaces for people. So we try to just inventory all that to make the best assessment of what the overall space needs projection looks like.
I'm curious, given the recent pandemic, you know, I think most of corporate America is trying to evaluate right now what this looks like afterwards. And you have some corporations saying, "We're never returning to what it was" because the exercise has proven that we don't all need to be under one roof. How does that, in your opinion, translate into a municipal or a government body, or is it too soon to even comment?
That's a great question. I think, I can't give you a simple answer to that, but I think, you know, if we're looking for sort of silver linings that came out of the pandemic, we're trying to look at, what have we learned from that in terms of how we're able to do our work? And, I mean, the fact that, you know, we've all kind of gone through that process and counties, municipalities, everybody, just like corporate America's, had to deal with, you know, changes in terms of how operations were done. We're hoping to see, you know, what worked well, what didn't work well, and take that into consideration for the future planning. You know, I've talked to a couple other judicial groups that, you know, sort of quickly switched over to doing Zoom for some of their court proceedings and that. I've heard that, you know, there's a little bit of inefficiency with that that kind of slows down the process a little bit, but for certain types of cases, for example, I think that it's been able to work pretty seamlessly for certain functions, which may mean that, you know, you've got maybe less space needs, or maybe it's just different types of space needs to accommodate those functions. Certainly, I think that everybody-- Certainly, I think that everybody did a nice job of trying to leverage implementation of technology to overcome some of those hurdles. So, you know, maybe you're investing money in a different way, you're investing it in technology and other types of functional resources, and maybe a little less on space or certain things like that. So it's not an easy answer, but I think what's good about it is we're undertaking this study at a pretty good time where we can have good direct feedback from what we just went through over the past year plus and see what we can do to, you know, take that into consideration for the long-range planning.
Yes, Mr. Shepro.
Shepro, I mean, it occurs to me even before the pandemic, if you look at maybe the last 20 odd years in the banking industry, so many of the banks now have these cavernous offices and you've got two tellers and maybe one person sitting amidst a sea of blank, empty workstations. And obviously, I guess it's because it was before the pandemic, a lot of it's just technological changes that, like, you know, nobody, I once had somebody make fun of me because I went to a drive-up window and they say, oh, nobody goes that anymore, they all do it online. Well, and I suspect that government is a lot that way now. Some of it may need some statutory changes about what offices have to be open and when. But it does seem to me that in many cases, the public is arguably better served by not having to, you know, get in the car and drive to Geneva if they can do their business another way. And I don't know how you evaluate that. Maybe one of the part of the process is to identify regulations that might inhibit change that would otherwise be desirable.
Well, that's a great point.
I will say that, you know, there's a lot of people who have become very comfortable with doing other business electronically. And so I think the idea of looking at any kind of statutory hurdles that may, you know, kind of hold you back from a more, I'll say, modern operation is one aspect of it. The other part would be just taking a look at the operational data. Because while I agree, I mean, I'm one who I like to pay my taxes online, but I do know in every county I've worked with, there's still a lot of people that like to come and pay it in person. I'm not 100% sure why, but, you know, I think, you know, we always have to do the planning in terms of having that flexibility because, you know, just because we want something to happen in a more streamlined way, doesn't always work out that way. So maybe it's an issue of planning for that flexibility and making sure that we've got an opportunity to evolve in that regard. I'll give you one example of that. So we just finished the design and they just finished construction of the Will County Courthouse. And so when we were planning the circuit clerk space, you know, they were in the middle of transition away from a lot of the paper files, going to much more electronic files and that. So we knew that at the time, we still had to have, you know, a reasonable amount of space for storage of paper files. But we also knew that the system was going to continue to grow for the next, you know, 30-plus years. So we just designed these, you know, bulk file rooms to be able to be easily converted to take the files out, put more workstations in for additional clerks. So it can be simple strategies like that in terms of long-range planning to make best use of space and allow for change in the operation. So there's a whole host of those kind of things, and that's the kind of stuff that, you know, we really get from, you know, our experience working on these types of projects and the time we spend with all the different department heads and elected officials, really talking through their operations and trying to, you know, collectively do our best work to vision what the future operations are going to look like and develop a facility plan that supports that.
Just a quick follow-up. I think we've also learned, maybe through the pandemic and maybe just heightened public awareness, that there are special needs people, senior citizens, those with disabilities, that I think in many cases, there is a heightened awareness that those needs need to be addressed somehow.
And that usually is done with newer buildings and planning and ADA requirements, which are statutorily required. Mr. Martin.
I think, I don't intend this to be humorous, but it might, some people sound like it, but I think as we make decisions, we need to look at the average age of the people sitting around the table here and realize that we're not really making decisions for our age group. You know, talk to your kids and ask them how they pay their bills and ask what they do. Now, some of you are younger, okay? So I'm not trying to insult-
Listen, Grandpa.
But it's important, it's important that we don't look at this from the perspective of this group as we sit here because we're not the future. I hate to bust, burst all your bubbles, but we're not the future here.
And from my understanding, when you're looking at these programs, some of our business, because we are government, is people-centered. And by being people-centered, we do require individuals that will continue on, some not, where banking industry, treasury can be done computerized. Many of our people, I see every day, multiple of cars coming to drop off their property taxes and someone is there to collect them. And they do want that personal touch. So government is, can be stewed very effectively, like a business, but government is not a business. It's different, it's a hybrid and it is very people-focused. And as far as board members and elected officials, we are there to represent people, so people have to be able to be able to come to our office and the building has to look welcoming to them.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good point to think through in terms of having multiple, multiple modes of interaction, I guess, with the public. You know, we've talked about it here, some people are very comfortable, you know, doing things online, some just, they don't understand the process, there's a comfort level with coming in and being able to be face-to-face and talk through something with somebody to understand it better. So, you know, I think for counties, municipalities, any public service entity to be really effective, you need to kind of have those multiple modes of interaction. You know, one other thing I'll say, just, you know, reflecting on the pandemic for a moment, on one hand, yes, maybe we could work remote and displace some people out of facilities, but there's still certain operational things, just in terms of oversight and collaboration and so forth, that it's important to be together. And, you know, I think what we're finding that difficult tension at times where, you know, we were wanting to have people together but be distanced and you need space to do that. So again, I think it's finding that fine balance of how to build the right amount of space that gives you that flexibility without, you know, breaking the bank, I'll say, by, you know, building space that's beyond the financial resources.
Davis, was question, comment?
Yes, yes, Mr. Davis.
First, Jason, it's very nice to see you. I'm sorry I'm not there today. For those of you that haven't heard Jason speak before or are familiar with White and Company, it probably is clear today how well they know us and what kind of quality work they've done for us before. Jason, have you guys done a lot of work with the P3 approach to this? That may be getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but, you know, there are a couple of possibilities I see there, you know, with parking and, you know, in discussions with the coroner's office, we talked a little bit about the possibility of bringing a lab to Kane County, you know, that that's usually a backup. So any thoughts on a P3 approach for some parts of this?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's something we should talk about. So for those of you, P3 is public-private partnerships, if you haven't talked about it extensively here before, and provides a different mechanism where you might partner with a private industry to develop facilities so that you're not taking the full burden of the initial cost outlay for a new facility. And often you're paying back through an operations model, and there's dozens of different ways that those models can be structured. We've done a lot of research on P3 projects. You know, I'll say that Illinois has not maybe embraced the P3 model quite as effectively as other areas. One area frankly that's done a wonderful job is in Ontario, Canada. They deliver the vast majority of their public projects in a public-private partnership model, and it's worked very well for them. But we are, we're actually looking at a couple different P3 opportunities that have a developer-driven component to it, some in the parks and rec market. And then, Mark, as you suggested, thinking about things like parking, you know, because you have a revenue stream potentially with the parking, where if you can charge for parking, there's a revenue stream that maybe makes the combined deal more effective for private industry partners. So I would say that, that should definitely be part of the conversation, just explore those opportunities as a potential mechanism to be able to execute projects without the county having to front all the money for that. And it just really comes down to kind of a case-by-case analysis and making sure that the financial metrics work out to be able to make the project seem viable for your private industry partner.
Question, please, Madam Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Bates.
I'm not sure I understand this table by judiciary very well, or completely, but I do see you're projecting that the number of judges will grow from 36 to 50. Is that, is that the main projection here?
Yeah, you know, this is, this is an example, this is not a recommendation yet for Kane County. This is just a representative of a tool that we use and some of the different models we use of projecting increases in judicial function. So this is not, you know, our recommendation for Kane County at all at this point.
Okay, thank you. But I have one more question, and that's because our birth rate is dropping, so do we take that into-
Excuse me, Ms. Bates, could you please speak closer to your microphone?
I can do that, is that better?
Much better.
Because the birth rate has dropped about 2,000 since, in 10 years in Kane County, are we keeping an eye on that? Aurora once built a high school and had no kids to put in it, so I just want to make sure we're watching those demographics?
Yeah, so demographics are important. You know, we do look at the population projections and, again, just like some of the, you know, planning work that we're doing long range, I think you've seen with CMAP that there's predictions that are made and, you know, those have to be constantly recalibrated because, you know, outside influences come into play and things change over time. So population and demographic projection is just one of the many models we use. I can't even read my own chart from here on the screen, but I, I think there's a metric on there that talks about ties to population. So, you know, we tie certain staffing metrics or projections for departmental increases is one model, just one of several, to population projections. And we find that some departments or some functions within the county tend to correlate a little closer to population and some of them have very little impact. So it's absolutely one of the metrics that we look at, but is not by any stretch the, you know, the definitive one, there's multiple metrics we have to look at.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm really, at the end of the presentation here, I, like I say, I wanted to focus a little bit on that front end. So we've had a couple preliminary meetings with Chris and Roger, and we're starting to get into a discussion of really kind of defining in more detail the specifics of this front-end work. You know, I know there's a tendency at times to want to get to the answer, you know, at the end, and we're going to get to good answers, I think, through the process. But we like to take a pretty systematic approach to looking at it so that we've got a good foundation of understanding what's really important to the county, what things have changed over the years, what other interests might be in play, if there's other functions that you feel the county could help in. And I would encourage you to not just think about it as it relates to core county service delivery. We've seen a lot of times where, you know, counties have done partnerships with other, whether it's a non-for-profit or other functions that maybe provide a broader level of support to the, to the whole county, which may be a little bit off from your core sort of mandated services. So I use the DuPage County Health Department as an example before, this is a different type of public-private partnership where they, in their focus on behavioral and mental health services, they partnered with a non-for-profit, National Alliance for Mental Illness, and they provided some space inside one of their buildings to provide an additional supportive program that was a benefit to, you know, a broader group of the county. And it was made possible by just some good creative thinking and kind of working through some financial metrics on some lease opportunities and that, to really just provide a different and perhaps better level of service to the county as a whole. So I guess I would encourage you at these early stages to, you know, kind of free-think a little bit and not be too constrained. There's always time to dial back or talk about things that maybe don't fit, but we find that if you kind of get too constrained first, you have a tendency to maybe miss an opportunity that would come into play and therefore we can't effectively plan for it. So that's just one, I guess, bit of encouragement I'd give you at the outset of a study like this.
Yes, Mr. Shepro.
Do you have any preliminary thoughts about buildings that are, you know, past their useful life as opposed to a separate need for expanded or new facilities?
Probably too early for me to say for your facilities right now. I mean, I know that, you know, I'm not as current on maintenance items that may have gone on in the last, you know, say, seven, eight years or so here, but that's certainly things we'll be looking at as part of the study. You know, and I think there's kind of two aspects to that. One is, is a building in a condition that makes it a viable asset, just from a pure physical condition standpoint, has it got a good roof, good mechanical systems, you know, that kind of stuff. But the other aspect of it is, is it in the right spot? And is it, you know, configured in a way that supports an operation versus just sort of make and do, I guess? So I know I'm not giving you an answer, but I think it's important to kind of look at all aspects of that equation. And then as we get into it, you know, we'll work to make recommendations that say, yeah, you know, maybe this building's past its useful life and it's got a couple other issues, you may be better off to build something new. Or this building may be not perfect, but with a small investment, you can make it a really good long-term asset. So we'll look at both options.
I think you did answer my question.
Okay, good.
Yes, Mr. Foss.
Mr. Copehill, Mr. Foss has the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I kind of asked Mr. Allen to go start down this path mainly because, as was mentioned, we put the multi-use facility in kind of a different spot than it was originally planned. So my original thought was, let's look at that site out there and no, update it. And when we went through that process, even though I drive by there almost every day, I was amazed at how, you know, we have all that land out there and a lot of it's not really a blank slate. You know, there's berms and detention ponds and lakes and things that we can't touch. So it seemed like a good idea to do this. But as you can see, there's a lot more to it and this will take some time, but I think it'll be a useful document. But, you know, that land was purchased out there in, you know, the late 80s, the concept of consolidation dates back 32 years. And I think if we could speak to the board from back then, they would be amazed right now that we're as little along the path that they had set for us that we are. We've had a long period of austerity where we haven't spent much on new construction. You know, we just built our first building in 14 years. So I think it's important to, you know, look at the fact that this facility here was, it was a repositioned building, re, what's the word I'm thinking?
Repurposed.
Repurposed building, you know, bought in '74. So it's approaching 50 years as a repurposed facility. So I think we need to take our stewardship responsibilities seriously and start looking at some of these things to provide, our job is to provide for future needs and not just keep putting it off and putting it off. So I hope when this plan's done that we can actually not just put it on a shelf and watch it collect dust, but come up with a plan for starting to implement it. Thank you.
Mr. Cope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Speaking of useful life on a building, the current county seat there has been, has had a useful life for centuries. And what, hang on a second.
Is that better?
Is that better? Has had a useful life for a century. And I believe just by, just by wandering through the halls there, everybody's crammed in the cubicles and cubby holes and stairwells can't be used, the headspace is wrong and the bathrooms are tucked in the basement, you know, and so on and so forth. I think we've met our useful life on that building. And a long-term vision, and even considering the interest rate environment, you may, this may even be a short-term vision. If we could consider the idea of, of eventually vacating that building, selling it and then moving a newer facility out towards, onto the old Fabian jail site. I don't know if the county seat needs to remain in Geneva or can it be moved out to the St. Charles complex. But it'd be nice to leave it in Geneva. The county seat in Geneva is an attractive aesthetically pleasing business for the, for the community. And, but that's, that's the long-term vision. I don't know if it can be converted to a short-term because the interest rate environment is not going to last long. But that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, I know, Mr. Shepper, you have another thought. Is there anybody else, Mr. Ford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things. One is, I don't know if it's possible, whether it be through you or our own IT, is to see some data on how our people are using technology that we have available. Sorry about that. I don't know how to stop this. To see how the, see any data on the use of technology for paying bills or paying their taxes or anything else. If we continue with any Zoom communication, whether it's through court systems or different departments. And also are, are we doing any traffic studying as we look about moving out into another area where it's going to be congested, which I'm actually for getting out of this space because I think this space has a lot more use going back on the tax dollars than we can ever make out of it just staying here. So I'm, I'm one of those who looking forward, like Drew said, into taking this as, as what was meant by the ones before us to move forward.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? If not, Mr. Shepper.
I was only just going to comment that moving the county seat would actually require a referendum. But in the past, part of the reason why there is a satellite circuit clerk office in the old courthouse is that that satisfies the legal requirement that the county, that county office is still located in Geneva, even though the big facility is in St. Charles. And that would be, I think, equally applicable to other offices as well. As long as there is some physical presence in the city of Geneva, then you don't have to move the county seat, but you can build a satellite facility far away. I think that's the case in McHenry County where their, their main facility is actually out in the unincorporated areas north of Woodstock.
Yeah, we, we have worked with McHenry, but I think you may be right in that. And I've heard that strategy employed with other counties before. I would, I'd leave that a little bit to the legal experts to kind of fine tune that. But I think you do have some flexibility there in terms of your planning. I wouldn't use that as a barometer to, to guide all your planning.
I have a question. So we have, besides the auxiliary buildings, the traffic court and then the health department and that's up north as well. Are you going to be taking a look at the three large locations, the one in St. Charles, the one on Fabian, I'm just talking about land right now, and the one here? And offer potential suggestions on how those spaces could be used?
Yeah, that's our plan. We just started dialoguing a little bit about sort of the extents and parameters of our study. So we had a good discussion about not only looking at the departments and their uses, but your existing land assets and, you know, what, what makes the most sense. I mean, I think that, you know, just taking this property, for example, you know, I, I know that there, there's been past planning that talked about relocating the county government functions off of this site and the potential that, you know, does this site prove beneficial to a developer, for example? What's the value of the land for redevelopment? I think that we should look at all those things and that's the kind of stuff where we're taking a little bit of time right now to make sure we're setting off in the right direction and not that, you know, what we, what we develop right now as a plan can't be adapted. Certainly I've seen through a process like this that, you know, we'll start down a path, new information will come in and we may want to go look at a new piece of property or a new building or something, you know, opportunities present themselves, so we need to be flexible. But we do want to look at all of your existing building assets as well as land assets to see what, you know, what's going to be most beneficial.
And then one more question. Once this is all decided, will there be a recommendation for priority of needs?
Yeah, and we, we really like to do that in unison with all of you. Certainly we want to give you our professional judgment on, you know, what we've seen, you know, what are, what's the data telling us from the groups we've met with? But, you know, that, that's where I think having a well-organized committee, and we've talked a little bit about that in terms of, you know, members of the board and other senior stakeholders with the county. Who's going to make up a good guiding committee to help, you know, steer those kind of conversations and decisions? You know, another thing that I think might be worth thinking about is we've had good success with some other clients on maybe actually getting some other key stakeholders, whether that be maybe other municipalities or other leaders within the county. If you want to try to get a little broader, you know, set of information from other people or other stakeholders that can help provide their thoughts and guidance on that, something to think about. It doesn't, it's not always necessary, but, you know, we want to work with you in a collaborative way to, to make those decisions on what are your highest priorities and then, you know, put a little bit more energy behind those to start moving forward with solving some of the, some of the challenges.
Yes, Ms. Wannicki. Go ahead, Madam Chair.
Hello?
Hello? Are you standing?
Thank you. When you reach out to the key community stakeholders, perhaps that should be narrowed down for a specific building? I'm thinking specifically about the health department. We cannot really adequately comment on the health department. Some of you may be able to, but more specifically, people who are in that field could have better input, hospital designers, hospital administrators, who know what the functionality of a good health center should look like. So I'm, I'm just wondering, as we start diving down a little bit deeper, if we can have that committee be flexible to bring subject experts in?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, we'll, we'll bring in or, you know, working with you at your direction, bring in sort of key experts on, on specific topics. And I think, you know, certainly with the board representation here, you've got representation across the county. But, you know, from time to time, in fact, King County did it in the past with some art planning work, bringing in a couple other sort of key community stakeholders that, you know, just provided some feedback, whether they're influential members of the community or might be tied to a specific, you know, mission or function within the county. So I guess I would just, you know, like I say, that's not, that's not a requirement of it, but it might be something to just give a little bit of thought to if, if you find that there's an opportunity to hear from another voice in the county. And that may come into play a little bit more as it relates to maybe some other sort of strategic partnerships that may allow you to, to provide in unison with a private entity, better services and that. So I, I don't have a recommendation for you specifically on that here today, but I would just, you know, take that into some consideration to see if, you know, if any of you kind of feel that there might be a good additional stakeholder to kind of add to the discussion.
Thank you. Ms. Wannicki? Did you have a comment as well? Mr. Strathman? No? No? Okay.
Well, Nikki here. We're truly ready to move forward and, you know, in the near future and sell this property. We need to check, you know, I can't recall if this building is on the register of historic places. And, you know, it's good to get it on the tax rolls as Commissioner Ford had mentioned. However, with the past history of this property, it would be really sad to see it as a tear down and possibly condominiums in its place. So, you know, I, I think King County has a strong historical background and would like to maintain that.
I could actually see if the church wants to buy it back.
It is my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, just because a building is on the National Historic Archives, that does not mean that it can't be deaccessed itself.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
It is simply a record of recognition that a building of historic significance was there and it could be placked.
I was just going to say, those of us who've been around know that, well, one, at one point, I can think of almost any building we had, there was a one-point discussion about selling off the Third Street courthouse for some sort of residential development. And that didn't go anywhere. And I think it took us over 10 years to finally sell the Sixth Street school, which I remember at the time, I was told, that was the most expensive building that we owned to heat. And obviously there's discussion about this. I seem to recall that there was something called a charrette process that was organized for, I think, the landfill, Settlers Hill and the surrounding jail property. And I know there were a number of meetings. I don't remember whether anything came of it. But that was, I know that, that was a process that involved City of Geneva, Batavia, the county people and, you know, private parties. It was, I think they had a series of meetings about that. And anytime you start talking about moving a county facility, you're going to get, I've not pushed back, concerned by the local municipality that's like with the Montgomery Ward Building, they didn't want to lose the tax revenue. And, you know, Geneva at various times has expressed concern about what our plans are for the old, the old jail site. So I think those are going to be, if they're not allowed at the table, we're going to hear from them anyway.
I, I would agree with that. I would agree with that. I, just to be mindful, we are going to have to leave in about five minutes. We have to get down to Aurora. We have a town, town hall meeting that's going to be starting at 6:30. So I'd like to have this meeting concluded perhaps in the next five minutes, if that's convenient to all.
Serge is here. Madam Chair, my, my, my reach out to everybody is that I honestly believe that we live this far from the lakefront, this far from the city, because to each of us, there's some historical relevance here. Whether you're from St. Charles or Elgin or Aurora, there's neat things. And everything shiny and new is not the best. And, and I hope that we find that balance within us.
Does that include the board members?
Unfortunately true, yes. I, I hope that we would find that balance of what's historic and relevant and, and becomes who we are, but build upon that. And then secondly, just, you know, when, when you talk about rejuvenation and we sit in this room that has had many a facelift, but this most recent one, I remember six months ago, I couldn't stand being in this echo chamber. And then all of a sudden, somebody snapped their fingers and it's become a state-of-the-art sound system, baffles on the wall that matched the wall color and we're able to do Zoom across the world.
No pews.
No, without pews. It's a, I like the pews though. So my, my point being whoever did this, whoever made this happen, bravo to them. And I believe that we can continue to find that balance and, and we surely appreciate you coming out and helping hold our hand and shepherd us through this process.
In part, you all made it happen.
So, yes.
Just to wrap, wrap things up, yeah, to the purpose of Jason being here today was just to kind of tell you, we're starting down the road. So that's why he maybe couldn't answer every question he had. So just starting down the road and, and good things will come and all those questions will be answered and we'll get it done.
It's going to be an exciting process. If there's no other question?
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Dwyer?
Shepper?
Hold on, let us, thanks. Thank you so much for your kind and very thoughtful presentation. We look forward to working with you in the next few months, I think even probably longer relationship than that.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you guys again as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Shepper, you had something?
Motion to adjourn?
Second, put by Mr. Martin.
You can, you can vote now?
Oh, no.
Aye.